Yeah, everybody's on.
Everybody's here.
We're all here?
We're all here.
All here.
All right. Uh, I'd like to call the uh, um, special board of selectmen meeting for Thursday, November twenty first to order. Uh, we only have one item of business and as to discuss to take possible action on a resolution to transfer unexpendable bond funds to purchase a basin cleaning truck. I do not see MJ here, but uh, I'm not sure. I think we went through. Is MJ there?
It flashed up. It's not there any longer.
Hmm.
Okay.
He's being recorded. I don't see anybody. Uh. Give me a quick second. I'll just see if she's up in her office. Trying to log in.
We had a very good turnout last night for the um, housing uh, update. It was, it was very positive.
Oh, good.
It was really, it was very good.
Sorry.
That's, that's okay. We're, we're gonna try to do more of it.
Good. Was it mostly presentation?
I'm sorry, what?
Oh, I, I just asked you if, if it was mostly presentation or back and forth discussion or how did it?
It was a little of each. It was, it was a, it was, it was an hour and um, a half with two, with, within it, two breakout sessions and people participated in the sessions very actively. Matt was there. He gave a nice opening uh, summation.
Nice. That's great.
You're, you're very kind, Sandy.
Well, you did. You did.
The uh, yeah, actually, I was pleasantly surprised uh, at the Dr. Alexander Hoffman, I think, did a really good job of facilitating. Uh, he's, he's a little aggressive in his tone and his voice occasionally, but it, I thought it went well, so.
I, I agree. And I, he, he moved it along at a good clip, which I appreciated.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, he did.
Was, was it recorded?
Yes, it was, well, it was taped by GCTV.
But, okay, perfect. Great.
Uh, I don't think we're gonna have MJ, but I, uh, I, I'm not sure that we actually need her today. We discussed, I think, at length, the um, the opinion uh, from bond council relative to the appropriateness.
Assuming there were no change, no changes at all, but uh, no changes, so.
Uh, and in the conversations that she and I had offline on it, uh, the bond council would not have provided that language had they not specifically agreed uh, that that was appropriate. Uh, so, so that's where we are. Uh, so when we left it uh, uh, the, the other day, one day, geez, three days ago already. Um, yeah, uh, we wanted to make sure that all of us had the opportunity to weigh in and Lou, you did not have an opportunity to uh, participate in that portion of the conversation. So uh, like, I don't know if there's anything uh, that you wanna add. Uh, Sue had uh, you know, expressed some concerns about the, the, the nature of doing something like this. Uh, that clearly was intended for other uses uh, when first approved by the voters. Uh, and while this is uh, you know, legally okay, uh, you know, it, does it pass the smell test? So, uh, you know, that, that kinda thing. So I don't wanna put words in your mouth, Sue, so.
No, I, yeah, I mean, not to, not to rehash, and I, I tried really hard to get on the same page as the rest of you. I really did. But um, I, I think there's two things we're doing. We're approving um, a, a very, very large purchase. Um, outside of, of uh, and fire trucks, I think this is probably the most expensive piece of equipment that we've ever purchased in town. And we found out about it like five minutes ago. And I think it's, there was a very good case made for the environmental and efficiency and safety reasons that we should have it, and I get that. Um, it's just that it's sudden and it's out of context. I mean, we were hoping to wait and I, I wanted to wait and see the public works portion of the five-year capital budget so that I could see the context, so that I could understand what's coming down the road. And unfortunately, that wasn't on there. Um, I don't fault Dave for that. I frankly, the instructions given to the departments probably didn't stress the need to do that, cuz you can see it in other places too. But um, we haven't had enough of a chance to vet it. Now look, think about the showmobile. We approved that purchase without knowing that we didn't have a vehicle that could pull it, so we dealt with that. And then now we're finding out that we, we should have thirteen thousand dollar li- lighting system for it. I mean, I assumed the showmobile was all-inclusive. I know I'm kinda jumping all over the place here. I apologize. Um, we haven't had a chance to see if other towns have one. Is there a way to share this? Is Madison talking right at this very minute about a need for this? Maybe there's something that can be done there. Um, I feel like there's a sense of urgency being placed on us because of this concept that the price is going to go up, which may, and, and maybe it will, and it probably will go up. I don't know about twelve percent, but you know, that's a, that's a tactic. That's a sales tactic when, when, when a buyer is told that. So I'm not, I'm, while I'm comfortable with the concept of the truck, I don't feel ready to approve it now. I would rather wait until the spring, see it properly in the um, the capital portion of the budget, see it in context, make an orderly decision, not a rush decision, even if it means the risk of a price increase. So that's where I am on the, on the, cuz we're really doing two things. We're deciding to buy the vehicle and we're also deciding how to fund it, right? So that's where I am on the purchase of the truck. As far as the use of bond funds, I'm sorry, but I don't understand how someone could read that resolution that we put before the taxpayers and think that people said it would be okay to buy a truck. And I'm not questioning, you know, I, I know nothing, everything's being done above board. I'm sure that we have the authority to make this kind of a change. But when you read the wording of the resolution, it's for, we, we made a case at the time that the public, existing public works facility had to be improved, and that's what we intended at the time, and now we've gone in a different direction. As a result, we have money left. I just feel like it's too much of a leap to say, okay, let's buy the, make the largest equipment purchase we've ever made that we didn't even know about till a month ago. Let's use the extra money for that. So, sorry. Um, but that's what I'm coming out on the whole thing.
No, no, that's super helpful. So, that is super helpful and, and, and entirely understandable. Um, my sense is um, that most of that objection quite literally and, and appropriately is about the process of how we got here. I hear you literally saying substantively, this seems to make sense and we're accepting the argument for this. But the process is outside of our normal process. Um, and, and there are times when that absolutely matters. Um, and, and is, can in fact overcome a substantive position and why something should happen and how it happens. Um, in this case, I, I, I'm sort of moved by the fact that circumstances with the physical location of public works have changed, given that the pending move and we're not gonna literally not do what needed to be done there any longer. Um, and, and that both events, the, the, a big portion of this was the truck cleaning station um, and, and repaving, and then this piece of equipment is all about, you know, cleaning drains, both ultimately relate to water issues and managing wastewater. And, and I think those are, in my mind, close enough that I can overcome the fact that this is outside of the normal process. Um, and the delay, I would hope that, that this makes enough sense. The net dollars are the same. Um, and that, that the delay, well, maybe not same. We would pay slightly more. And your comment about the, you know, sort of false urgency does ring true. I get it. But this, the problem with these, the secondary effects of not being able to completely clean some of these drains, which are, you know, builds up over time, and there's small drains in places that have, that probably not had sufficient attention over time, and the sooner we get to it, the better. So I can get past the procedural pickups um, of this and, and get on board.
Well, I, I, that's helpful. I understand. I appreciate all that, but just let me correct your characterization of my comments. I'm not objecting, I'm not objecting to the procedure. I'm saying that the, the procedure that we're following does not permit us to make a good orderly decision. It's not just about the procedure. It's about, there, there's a reason that we have a procedure. There's a reason we have a five-year plan. Um, there are reasons why taxpayers vote on these things, and it's, it's not, it's not about the lack of procedure.
Uh, got you. Well taken. I, I understand your clarification.
Okay.
Um, haven't we, since the five-year plan was inaugurated about fifteen years ago or, or so, haven't we moved um, items around in, in timing from time to time where something was in one year and we pushed it up or something was in a cur- a proposed for next year and we pushed it out? So I mean, we have, we, we have flexibility in the five-year plan to move things around.
No, we, we do, and I don't wanna speak for Sue, but I think the, the point here is, this was, this uh, item was never on the five-year capital plan. It just showed up uh, and quite honestly, outside of the five-year capital plan, uh, cuz it was not, uh, it, it, it might have wound up there uh, that eventually, but it had not been there. So that, that's, now, there's no question that every once in a while, emerging needs or newer technologies show up that have precluded us from having considered it in the past and having included it. So, and I have a suspicion that that could be one of these. One of the things that I think we're all in agreement on as a board is uh, the innovation and the different way of thinking that Dave Castro has brought to his job and the management of that department uh, and, you know, the creativity. So uh, you know, again, it, 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 is there, is there blame we sat here? Dave probably didn't think of the vector only a month ago, right? We probably should have been talking about this. It, and it may well have been talked about at the, at the commission meetings. I don't know how long you've been, uh, you know, talking about this at commission meetings.
Yep.
That, that's a question. I was gonna ask Dave about that. Um, when did you, how long have you personally thought about this piece of equipment and to follow up with what Matt said? Have, have, had you discussed it at all at the commission level?
We have. We, we've discussed it at the commission level. We looked at a vector last year, and the one that we looked at was eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars around. And at that time, the commission said that's way too much for the taxpayer, you know, to, to be paying for, for a truck. And so we looked at what we would need and, and how much it would improve uh, what we do here. And so over the year, I've been looking and, and coming up with um, uh, different uh, points for them to, to know about what uh, the benefit of this truck would be. And so it came to the last meeting where, where they said, okay, well, you know, this is a truck that we need. Um, and then I brought up, you know, the capital money that was in place for the wash bay and, and uh, you know, the driveway, and they, they all agreed. They said, we should, we should approach the board of selectmen and use this money to purchase this vehicle at this time. And I said, okay, well, I'll bring it up, and, and that's where we are.
Yeah, so, so the best-case scenario is we would have uh, seen this on a five-year, we should have seen this on a five-year capital plan last year at this time. It should have been, it should have been part of that discussion. But because, because the commission was uncomfortable with a price uh, shows that this really is a failure of process. If it's something that they're considering, it should go on the capital plan as a, a, a potential.
Place holder.
Sure, is inaccurate there. I mean, to Dave's point, they looked at it last year and didn't bring it forward because it wasn't appropriate in their mind.
Price-wise.
I uh, you know, when, when all of this came up, uh, Susan's points, uh, I really took to heart, and it really gave me pause, and I really have been thinking about it for the past few days. Uh, at this point in time, uh, I think I'm, I'm coming down on the side of uh, pragmatism because uh, David has uh, has made a good case for this truck. Uh, I respect the innovation he has brought to the department. The commission, uh, you know, as Dave just said, it isn't a, a spur-of-the-moment decision. It has, it is something that has been on their radar, and it, it has evolved, yes, outside of the board of selectmen, but not outside of uh, public works department and its commission. Uh, the, the process with the, the bonding. Yeah, I, I understand Susan's point completely, but it's not a first this time around. And my uh, point is if Bond Council and MJ and Matt, you're comfortable that, that this will work and is appropriate, I, I, like I said, I come down to pragmatism because it, it will cost substantial more money to go back through the process of bonding for a truck. And it will, you know, obviously you wouldn't bond for just the truck. It would be other things. So who knows what the process would be at that point. Uh, I, I really, at this point in time, it, it almost seems like the inevitability of, of this truck moving forward. Uh, I, I see no reason to delay it if it's something that, you know, has been decided that it's appropriate. I'm, I'm confident. I've expressed my concerns about the, the waste and the consequence and everything, but to Matt's point he made at the, the last meeting, I, I highly respect Janice's department and, and, and not putting the town and her, her own department at risk and handling it as appropriately as it could possibly be. We've already started the cleanup of uh, the stuff, the stump, the, yeah. But, you know, so I, 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 I wanna continue to encourage Dave's innovation in, in that department. I think we've seen some changes there. I, I, I think they're positive changes. Uh, Janice, I think we'll have the waste uh, issues under control. And to me, there's a certain inevitability, and we're at the point of, I, I think just the fact that how many meetings we've talked about this, how much I know I've talked about it and thought about it, there is a certain discomfort, but from my perspective, this is what we were elected to do, to, to make these uh, I don't know how tough of a discuss, uh, a decision it is, but it is a decision. I mean, that's what we're elected to do, to, to, to weigh things like this and, and make decisions that are best for the taxpayers. And because there's a certain inevitability about this, uh, I, I'm comfortable with supporting it at this point.
Good. Thank you. Thank you.
Just, just one quick, quick comment about that. I don't think this is what we were elected to do. I think there's a, i- if you look at our charter, this is why the taxpayers vote on, on how the town can incur debt. So I appreciate your point that we're the leaders and we have to make the right decisions for the town. What we're deciding is to do something now instead of, you know, four months from now, that is.
That's the point. That's the point I'm making. If it's a decision, the case has been argued that, you know, we would, in all probability, move forward in what you're suggesting in, in a, a new process, you know, that, that's where I come down with, you know, if we're gonna do it, why not do it now?
Anybody, anything further? Anyone else?
Well, this, this may not uh, help uh, with people's minds, but I'm just gonna ask Mary, Mary Jane, um, uh, you've, you've been a finance director in other towns in Connecticut. Is this something that you've encountered at other towns where they had bond monies approved and then they, the, the govern- governing body decided to use the money for something different than was, that was um, described in the bond and they used it for something that was not completely related to that? Just, just, I'm just curious.
Well, I don't even have to go back to other towns that I've worked for. Guilford themselves has done that more than once um, with approval from Bond Council. Um, so it, it's, if Bond, I rely on Bond Council. If I, I, I can't, you can tell, you can ask Dave. The first thing I say is I have to speak with Bond Council. It, it, or that's the first thing I say to anybody that comes with any type of request such as this. I, I talk to our Bond Council. Sometimes it's a straight-out no. Um, sometimes it's a yes, and we don't need to go to the Board of Selectmen because it's so clear. And the third option is we need to go to the Board of Selectmen, which I have come to you, I, I, I don't know, maybe close to a half a dozen times in, in my eight years um, here. It, it is allowable. Um, I, I understand, I don't, I don't think Sue is questioning the, that it's allowed. And I, I think she's mainly questioning the use and, and, and her role in it, so I totally um, understand that. Um, so I, I hope that answers your, your question, Sandy, and um, if, if I can have the floor, I'd like to ask, ask, ask a question. I came on late. I apologize. Having some, uh, we had some network issues here at, at my mother's this morning. Um, there was something, so I just wanted to ask you uh, what you meant when you were talking about the department heads not having adequate information to prepare their budgets?
Yes, there, um, there were a lot of items that came up in the budget, in the capital budget presentation for the, for this year and next year that were not on before. Um, and I'm not, and particularly with public works, I mean, there's really nothing, nothing new on there past the current year. And the whole point of that exercise is so that we can get an idea of what's coming down the road. And that's, that's, that was my point. Even, even as placeholders. We have a lot of things on there as placeholders where we don't know the amount. Um, we've had the Bullard, the Bullard Drive, the Baldwin thing. We keep pushing that out. I mean, there's stuff that's been on there forever as a placeholder. So that would have been helpful to see again, because we don't, none of us know if, if, there, there could be something just like this of this magnitude that's being discussed now at Public Works, but we don't know that.
Okay, I, I totally understand that. I just didn't want you to think that I'm not asking for that information. I, I am asking our department heads for that in, information. I know our department heads try to do the best job they can. Um, maybe they can do a little bit. If I just, I just wanted to be clear that that during the budget process, that is what is requested of them um, from my office. I just wanted to clear up any misunderstanding of that.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and I, I, I know the chairman fairly well. Uh, and it doesn't surprise me that uh, he, you know, a, a year ago, he said uh, eight hundred thousand dollars is too much. We're not even gonna consider it. Uh, that doesn't mean, that, and, and that's a conversation, uh, you know, for, for, for me to have with the chair relative to uh, the process, even, you know, I, I, I know, I know Mark Rockins pretty well. If he says, if he's putting it down on a piece of paper that says, we're, this, this project, he's, he's, he's backing it, uh, is, is, is his mindset. So uh, so, so the difference here is uh, definitive or possible. Uh, and the possible should be on that, uh, on, on, on that document, so. And, and then so we'll, we're gonna get Dave to manage his commission a little better, that's all. So.
I have a question for MJ.
You got it.
Uh, MJ, um, about how many open bond authorizations are on the books? I mean, we're talking five or twenty-five?
Uh, no. So I give you that report every quarter. I don't have it in front of me. Um, I would say seven, give or take.
And, and you do go through a process as they start aging out of finally closing those out? It's not like this authorization, all the authorization stay open indefinitely, right?
Uh, well, I, I, I made it a point, um, since I've been here to try to close out authorizations, and we have closed out many. So, um, yes, I do monitor them. A, a lot of the um, authorizations are open for extended um, amounts of time, you know, Long Hill Road, for instance, you know, took us quite a long time. You know, that was open for, uh, for a long time. When we do have extra funds left over, we, we do try to find um, appropriate uses for them so that we can close out these authorizations. Um, but we don't just leave them open just because.
So it's, and, and then the money's not actually in existence yet. These are bond authorizations. In order to produce that money, an actual bond has to go out and can get funded in order to, there's, there's additional steps here. I'm just kinda walking through.
Yeah, cor- correct. So we, so um, Guil- Guilford is, has the, you know, financial stability to be able to pay for the um, projects as we are doing them throughout the year. And then when we go out every July, as we do, July, August, we bond, we bring money in through the bond sale to reimburse ourselves for the expenses um, that have spent. So, so this particular money is just sitting as a, as a number on a piece of paper at, at, at this point. It, we have the ability to spend it. We, I don't have dollars in the bank trying to spend. I hope that answers your question.
Can I, can I ask, at what point during the process does Bond Council provide their written opinion of, among other things, that the, that the financing was properly authorized? Does, does that happen? Has that happened, or does that happen when we actually issue the debt?
Um, so I'm not sure I quite understand the question, but I'm, so um, when we uh, when we authorize the money, Bond, Bond Council is part of that whole process. Bond, but I, I give that, all that information to them. They write all your resolutions. They make sure that you're doing the right, the right thing. Um, as we go through and spend the money, um, a- again, um, we spend it on what we specifically said we were going to. Um, it's, it's why when you look at the reports I give you, it just doesn't say three million, four hundred and fifty-six dollars, period. It, it'll say the wash bay. It'll say, you know, a fire truck, you know, so um, we pay close attention to, to what that is. We make sure that um, it's appropriate. Anytime we go outside of that, that's when I seek an opinion um, from town, from our Bond Council. It, it's sometimes an email. It's sometimes a, a phone conversation. Um, he doesn't provide, doesn't provide like a letter to me. Um, you know, he, if it's approved, he gives me a resolution.
Right. So this, I mean, not to belabor this, but so there's two kinds of opinions. One is when you call somebody up and say, what's your opinion? But then there's also, um, I imagine it's written, but in order for us to go to the market, we have to have, um, I, I don't know what the terminology is, but some attorney has to say, yep, this is all, this is all by the book. The I's are all dotted, the T's are all crossed, right? Otherwise, it, it can't proceed.
Right, and that, that's part of our audit process as well. You know, as, as we go through the, as we go through our regular audit process, we're auditing the expenditures from those bond funds. So it's a dual.
Yeah, that's not.
Dual look at.
Yeah. Don't, don't.
I understand this point, Susan, making, I think it's, the point is the financial people are gonna wanna see an opinion letter from the lawyers to make sure they can send that bond into the market. Is that the point you're asking?
Yes, that, thank you. Thank you.
And, and we.
So nice to have a translator.
So, and just so you know, we spend probably three months putting that bond authoriz- that, putting that bond sale together. Um, our Bond Council um, reviews all the paperwork that goes through. He makes um, recommendations on wording changes. Um, you know, he signs off on all of that through that whole process as well.
Yeah, I was just wanting to make that point. Uh, our Bond Council, uh, Matt Ritter, uh, from Shipping and Goodman, he's got the last editorial swipe at the documents that our Bond Advisors prepare to go to the market. So uh, to, and, and MJ just mentioned that uh, he, he makes changes uh, up until the final document is, is ready to go out the door. So that is their, their imperimeter, their blessing on it. And then uh, there's uh, there, there are codicils, I think, within that document to say that it has been approved. It has, has gone through Bond Council, so that, and that it's legal. Uh, and Bob Hartman mentioned something pretty interesting the other day in our discussion. Uh, and relative to the uh, to, to the way the market react and, and the responsibility you have. Uh, if the money had been borrowed, uh, had actually gone, we had actually issued the bonds for this, and then we change our mind on how we're gonna use the funds, that would have required uh, 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 an adjustment to the bond covenants because we're using it for a purpose other than what um, they actually bought the uh, the bonds for.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead, Jim.
It's a, it's a different point going forward. I, I don't know who, if there is even any answer. But to, to avoid this situation going forward, would it be more appropriate to have looser bond language or tighter bond language?
We, we already have bond language that allows for this. There's no, no need to change any of the language.
No, I, I understand that. I understand. That's why we are where we are today. I'm addressing Susan's concerns, you know, as a as a model going forward to avoid this uh, this, this type of situation, should we be looking at tighter bond language?
The, I think that decision was made ten or fifteen years ago, um, basically because we had so little flexibility with changing circumstances or changing priorities. Um, and we, as. Um, and we, a- as as MJ said, and it wasn't this bond counsel, but we have been denied with this bond counsel. As well as previous bond counsel, when I was on the Board of Finance, that we could not use it for the, the, that, those potential purposes. And it was, I recall it as a specific, uh, commitment to loosen the bond language, to allow some greater degree of flexibility. Not a want and disregard, uh, for it, but it had to, it had to be within the parameters and the, and the language of the bond issue, the bond, uh.
That goes back to my position about us as a board being elected to to make these kind of leadership decisions. Uh, I, I mean, to the loose point, you know, since this bond was, was written. We've decided not to utilize the facility and change the facility, so obviously. You know, things that were written into that bond with the plan, that was appropriate at that point in time, have changed. Uh, so. While loose may give us flexibility and that becomes our decision-making here, I I personally don't have a problem with it. But I, to address Susan's concern, uh, I'm wondering if we gotta tiptoe through that. Take another look see.
Yeah, certainly, certainly, that'd be, uh, that'd be a conversation I'd be happy to have with the bond counsel. Uh.
A little bit of the problem is because of the cost of going to market bonds, okay, we tried to do some. Some funneling or whatever, you know, catch basin or whatever you wanna call it, and that, that what. Might be leading to some of this, uh, struggles that we're having because we're trying to put two or three different uses into a bond. And then have the flexibility later on to to make the, the decisions exactly where the money is going. Maybe that's part of the problem, that it is so costly to go to market.
Right, well, that's just why, that's why the, the town side of the budget has gone only every two years, we. To consolidate as opposed to the way the board of it, uh, goes out on an annual basis. Uh, okay, uh, yes, MJ.
I I I just wanna, you know, I I think part of the issue in this particular instance is that. The use of the funds is so vastly different than what was in the original authorization. You know, if we have an authorization to do the roof on the community center and all of a sudden the roof at the library caves in. Then we, you know, maybe we use that money from a roof to the roof, you know, those are. Things that, you know, it's an example of of how we, you know, move money around. I. I I guess we could have a conversation on 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 the wording. I I I personally think the wording we have is the best I've ever seen, but, um. You know, I I think this particular case is just an exception, it, in my, in my opinion. From anything else that we had come forth, um, here. I think that might be what's causing more angst on 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 some people's parts, and I I totally understand that.
Yep, that that's exactly right. If we had, if voters had approved a vehicle, a large vehicle, and then. Dave came before us and said, I think that having this back truck is more important, I I would have no problem with that.
Well, I I don't wanna make an over-obvious statement, but, uh, we've been highly successful in getting. Bond, uh, authorizations passed. I don't think we've had a bond authorization fail, uh, at referendum in. In 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 my recent memory, um, and so, you know, the 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 voters, yeah, there's. That 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 makes a good argument for the fact, well, they'll probably approve this, uh, in April, uh, but. Uh, again, there's always a chance that they won't, um.
Yeah, but then it'd be another bond cycle and I I don't know, I just. I I don't have a problem doing it at this point in time because, uh, it seems like there's support for this truck. And, uh. Yes, maybe it won't be a twelve percent increase, but then you gotta put in the bonding cost or whatever and or. You're not gonna bond for one truck. So that's why, i- if it's something that. That I've made the decision that I I think that a good case has been made to move forward with the vehicle, then let's do it.
Okay, um, Sue, it looks like we may not be able to get to where you wanna be, but, uh. Uh, thank you for your, thank you as always for your honest and forthright, uh, uh. Reckoning of your position, I greatly appreciate it, so.
Thank you, thank you, Matt. And I'll say, even though I'm going to vote against it, I'm glad we're gonna get it, so, if that makes any sense at all.
No, Sue, you you, um, approach things occasionally, um, from the point of view of your background and and, um, you know. Uh, you're very thoughtful on things and I appreciate it and, um. Because it it's helped me along the way over the seven years to to look at things, I think, a little more critically at times, even if we don't agree on the final outcome. Um, we've gone on so long, I've now forgotten, if if we do vote for this. The money that it's going to cost is covered in the, in the bond and we will, we'll still have a little bit left over, or will that exhaust the? The difference that we didn't use for the wash bay and everything. Mary Jane, that's a question for you, I'm sorry.
We are, we are, um, we anticipate using most, if not all, of of the money in that authorization. Um, there was a, there were other items in there, there might be a a little plus or minus, um, cause I apologize, I don't have it in front of that.
Okay.
Detail in front of me, but, um. Rest assured, at least, there, you got it?
I've got it open right now. This is, uh, the FY twenty, um. Provisions to town facilities, uh, Public Works repaves site, two hundred and thirty thousand, general road reconstruction, five hundred thousand. Public Works Wash Bay Construction, three fifty, uh, there's your, there's your five eighty, right? Two thirty, three fifty.
The first, the first and the third items.
Yes, the bond issuance costs are 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 also part of that. You, you delineate the bond issuance costs for each bond, uh, issue that gets passed, so. Uh, and my assumption is that the, the general road reconstruction will still, uh, still go through, uh, if we haven't already, uh, uh, authorized that. Or or.
Correct, I I I believe. Majority of that has been spent. I I'd just like to note that Janice has been trying to be, be recognized as well.
Well, she's more than recognizing, now has a floor.
Thank you. I I just wanna point out that, um, the bond authorization did, did include the Wash Bay facility. And I think Matt mentioned this, it's, you know, directly related to stormwater management, of which this truck is also, uh, directly related to. I, and, but I do wanna point out that we didn't just abandon the truck wash bay. Issue in terms of stormwater management. We've addressed it through policies and procedures at the Public Works Department. Um, and how they are supposed to be, um, washing down their trucks, utilizing the garage bay that exists. All that, albeit not as nice as a wash bay, it does, uh, provide the, um, you know, stormwater management. Uh, procedures for protecting our stormwater that way, so I I don't wanna. I don't want it on the record that we're abandoning that and instead buying this. It's, it's, you know, we have achieved. Uh, mostly the goals of the Wash Bay facility that we're not building now, but we will build one in the new facility if it is.
Mm-hmm, right, really important point.
Okay, um, have we, uh, have we, have we exhausted the conversation?
Yes.
Yes, we have.
Let's call the question.
Yes, is is, uh, is there a motion, uh, to approve the resolution as presented by Bond Counsel? Uh, which states the, uh, this is a resolution to transfer unexpended bond funds to purchase a basin cleaning truck. AKA the Vector. Um, it resolved that five hundred and eighty thousand dollars of unexpended bond funds is hereby transferred to purchase a basin cleaning truck. And be it further resolved that the five hundred and eighty thousand shall be transferred from excess bond funds as determined by the finance director. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A second?
I'll second.
Further comments or questions? All right, let me try your minds, uh, uh, select woman, uh, Renner?
Um, no.
Is that, is that a firm no, or is that an abstain or a recuse?
It's a, it's a, it's a no.
Uh, select woman, Ruah. Sandy, you're frozen?
Oh, boy.
Blink, Sandy.
Oh, go on.
Let's see if she can get back on, uh, those in the room?
Aye.
And then we'll wait a moment for Sandy to register her vote, or will we allow her to have it appended?
Let's give her a minute.
We'll give her a minute, yeah.
Doubt they were. The rank, it's the first rank in a long time, it's affecting, uh.
Sandy. Wow, DSL connection.
Hey, so we had an earthquake here last night.
What?
Yeah, I heard. Did you feel it?
Yeah, so I I have to tell you, so we we were at church, um, to see the shroud of Turin, for all of you Catholics out there. And, um, and, uh, halfway through the presentations, the bells in the church started to ring.
Oh.
It was like really weird. It was really weird because you were in church, right? But the built, but because of the earthquake, the building shook, the bells, in the sleep of, of the church, it was. And and we didn't, we didn't know what was going on. We we thought, we didn't, well, we didn't think anything, we just kept going and then.
Excuse me, I have, I have, uh, that's amazing. Sandy, can you hear us?
I can hear you now, but my, uh, screen froze. Is it everybody's?
No, just yours, just yours.
Okay, so if you're trying to take the vote, I vote yes.
There you go, for the record, thank you.
Sorry, I couldn't tell if it was, if we all went off or it was just me.
No, just, just you, so.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Sandy.
Thanks for calling back.
All right, well, uh, that motion.
Go ahead, just hang on for a sec.
That motion, that motion, uh, carries, uh, be nothing further on our agenda for today. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
Uh, all in favor? Thank you all.
All right, thank you, everyone.
All right, Matt, Mitch is waiting for you, Matt, for your next meeting.